committed to the whole for the district of Squamish on September eighth. Um, I'm Chris Peddingle, uh, acting mayor for the month of September, so I'll be chairing the committee of the holding. Um, want to welcome you to the Squamish Nation Territory, Alan Squanquist, Liptnoma, Kla, Squamish, Moenway. Um, first order of business, I would like someone to move, uh, we adopt the agenda. Mayor Elliott first, Councilor French second. Thank you, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have ministerial order M one nine two. Uh, pursuant to ministerial order number M one nine two, the district of Squamish is excluding in-person public attendance at the September eighth twenty twenty meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time, and the district's ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being livestreamed, and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on a non-demand basis. Can I have someone move that, please? By Councilor French, second Councilor Stoller, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So now, motion carries. Um, and then I do have a few little notes to read out about the process for this electronic meeting. Um, council members at the meeting are attending electronically are required to advise the chair of the meeting of the following: when you disconnect or reconnect. Um, just making sure I don't bring this here. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the chair that they would be placed on the speaker's list, or you can raise your hand if I have, if I'm able to see you on the screen. With respect to the vote, council members are only required to state an a vote, no statement is required if you're in favor. Um, when you're not speaking, please put your computer or phone on mute unless you wish to speak. Uh, everyone should be involved and participate in the meeting. Please text our C A O or corporate officer if you're having technical difficulties and need some help reconnecting, and we'll recess for up to ten minutes if the technical issue is on the district's side. So with that, uh, we move to the first order of business, which is zoning, uh, business park zoning update, and Mr. Valaniskas, I believe, is leading on this one. Do we have, can you see, Mr. Valaniskas there?
Yes, I am here, and I'm going to pass it over to Matt Gunn.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon, acting mayor and council. My name is Matt Gunn, I'm a planner with the district of Squamish, and today I'm going to be proposed, presenting proposed zoning updates for the business park. I'm going to share my screen there, and it'd be great if you could let me know if, like, how my presentation is coming up.
Yep.
For people. Fantastic, thank you. Okay, um, so today I'm going to talk a little briefly about the background to this project, uh, a little bit about the policy that's driving this, and introduce the, um, some of the proposed amendments, um, specifically an expanded commercial activities area within the, um, business park, and then talk a bit about zoning that would be proposed for the business park outside of this expanded commercial activities area, uh, and finally, uh, talk a little bit about the intensive industrial debt we need to land in the business park. Uh, so to begin, um, uh, our current zoning law was adopted in two thousand and eleven. This law has been updated numerous times in the year since its initial adoption. Uh, we had a new O C P that was adopted in twenty eighteen, and following adoption of this O C P, we initiated the twenty twenty zoning law update. Uh, the update is intended to address four goals, align zoning with the vision for the plan, which is to lower cost of development for the areas, uh, increase zoning flexibility, improve functionality, and address gaps for other components of the project. And a little review of the process, the twenty twenty zoning law update has been separated into three stages based on prior V I content. Work on the business park zoning, this part is stage two of the twenty twenty update. Developments that will be addressed in this stage include a density bonus system, which addresses low carbon energy systems and the core transit network and neighborhood nodes, as well as marine zoning and updating the community zoning mapping. Uh, this process maps out the stages of the stage two finalized development. We are now entering phase three of the stage, in which we're supposed to be in public feedback on proposed new regulations, and the legislative law adoption process for these elements is expected to initiate in November. While I briefly touched on the O C P policy that's driving the update to business park zoning, there are a number of goals that are aligned in the O C P related to employment space and as well as a specific section relevant to the business park. But one of the key policies in the section is highlighted on the screen, that seventeen point two point eight, which recognizes industrial activity as a key intent of the business park, and this policy and all the policies related to the business park have guided the development of proposed zoning for the business parks. Next, I'd like to present an overview of the regulatory update proposed for the business park. Stand for proposing zoning that is intended to provide increased flexibility to businesses within an expanded commercial activities area. The proposal is being made following completion of stakeholder discussions, surveys, open houses, and phone surveys. Before presenting the proposal, I do want to touch briefly on that engagement. Um, details about the engagement process can be found in the report to council, which is available online, but, uh, specific elements that I want to mention is that, like many of our fine projects, the COVID and health, uh, context has really disrupted our engagement program this spring, and we've adjusted to moving to an online process for engagement using websites for background information, as well as online open houses and phone surveys. Uh, because we're trying to provide some land use certainty to businesses in the business park, we've tried to keep the project moving despite the new engagement project. Um, because the timing of when COVID began and when we were, where we were at in the process did result in some engagement that occurred over the summer, and while that's not ideal, the new online engagement platform does provide some flexibility that traditional open houses and hand processes do not. So the background content, the proposed amendments, the recorded open houses and survey tools have also been available to the public online, uh, most for over a month. So we, we hope that that, um, flexibility of, of interaction and availability of that information has helped to address, uh, some of the challenges with engagement that we face. Uh, we have a platform called Story Map to house the information online, and it has proven fairly successful in terms of, um, having people take a look at the information. We've had over a thousand visits for the project page, um, for the employment, um, for the business park zoning, and the page of the proposed zoning plan has had over four hundred views. Uh, so we think these tools provide, um, some opportunity to address some of the challenges we have with engagement at this time, and it's likely something that we'll be using long after COVID era, provided that occurs. Um, so as mentioned, the proposed update for the business park is intended to increase flexibility by establishing an expanded commercial activities area. Uh, and this option is being done several factors. The approach balances arranging inputs received during stakeholder engagement, sector focus groups, and one-on-one stakeholder meetings. Inputs from these sources include numerous businesses that indicated that their operation relies on a commercial component that is complementary to their industrial activity, and others noted that flexibility over time is a really key aspect to balance the flexibility and growth over time, support growth over time. A number of commercial businesses identified that they have specific space needs that can't be met in Squamish's existing commercial centers, and so we're trying to accommodate that in the expanded commercial activities area. Um, the approach also builds off results from the employment-based demand model. The model indicated what industrial those base could be adequate to meet cemented demand over the coming years, but retail space will likely be unable to meet demand in both the near and long term, and so supporting some commercial in the business park creates, uh, some opportunities for those businesses, otherwise may find some challenges. Um, and also, there's another thing that we heard is that some industrial businesses indicate, and we talked about those in the past, they indicate that commercial activities can create challenges when they're co-located in an area. Um, so some of these challenges include parking and transportation access issues, safety concerns, increased fire code requirements, increased compatibility of land uses, security concerns around sound, disorder, or dust created by industrial operations, as well as upward pressure on land values and lease rates that are associated with commercial activities. And so by establishing a commercial, an expanded commercial activities area in the business park, um, our intent is to, outside of that area, preserve lands for specific industrial activities or solely for industrial activities to really help address some of those concerns that industrial activities have identified, um, that occur when they are co-located with commercial. And then finally, um, the option that we're presenting does support our emerging sector action plan. For example, in sector-specific focus group meetings, existent industrial businesses express that vibrancy associated with commercial activities in the business park actually supports their business activities, uh, that it helps to attract employees, for example, when there's, um, amenities nearby that are appealing to business employees. So I think we've balanced here that, uh, addressed the range of, um, concerns that we've heard. Uh, the proposed, the proposed location for the expanded commercial activities area is at the north end of the business park. It includes land that's currently zoned I eight and I nine along three parcels on I eleven to the west of Coonsway. These parcels are circled with, or identified with the red polygon on screen. Um, the rationale for selecting these areas reflects the results of the survey conducted, as well as specific focus through meetings. The I eight and I nine area is the social fair business park, and this area already incorporates much of the elements of the proposed zoning. Uh, the inclusion of the I eleven west of Coonsway reflects my intention to include additional parcels owned by a range of landowners, and recognizes that current uses in those areas integrate well with the expanded commercial activities area. Now, the size that's been identified here for this area is somewhat conservative. Um, it reflects a cautious approach to increasing commercial activities within the business park. Uh, we try not to go too far too quickly, um, something that can be tried and, and assessed as time goes on. Um, I now like to explain the proposed regulations for extended commercial activities area. First of all, we'll talk about accessory restaurants. This is a new use, um, that will be permitted in conjunction with industrial activities. Uh, these would be required to serve, uh, manufactured on-site, but may also include items on the menu that are not manufactured as part of the on-site industrial activities. Uh, and this would replace, uh, the restaurant use that has been permitted, uh, in the past in the business park. Uh, the maximum size for accessory restaurant will move from a maximum of fifty seats, which is the current, um, size for restaurant use in the business park, and it will move to a maximum of thirty percent of gross floor area that can be dedicated to restaurant use. And this reflects examples of a larger proportion of space dedicated to restaurants within the business park at this time. But it also provides the opportunity for restaurants to expand as manufacturing activities expand, so as businesses are successful in growth, it could also grow their, um, restaurant size in proportion. Parking requirements for accessory restaurants will be one space for fourteen square meters, and that replaces the requirement of one space for five seats plus one parking stall. Um, it approximates the engine requirements in the business park, but it also addresses the current challenge to have a work staff actively assess the amount of parking required at a D G stage because we don't get down to a number of seats better than that in a restaurant that long. And then patio use will be supported, uh, in line with stakeholder feedback. Patio uses associated with restaurants up to a hundred and forty square meters would not be added to the calculation for vehicle parking, but one covered bike parking stall would need to be provided for at least four square meters in patio space, and that space is intended to ensure that it's bike parking for about four percent of patio occupants. And then that's the two vehicle parking stalls could be utilized in the creation of patio space, provided additional six covered bike parking stalls are provided. Uh, these provisions, uh, would also be considered for various manufacturers that are outside the expanded commercial activities area, which were established under the I one zoning, providing equity to these different businesses. Okay, the next aspect I want to talk about is accessory sales. Uh, accessory sales are the retail sale of goods that are manufactured on-site as part of an industrial activity, and are currently over to twenty percent of the growth, uh, the growth of total floor area. Within the expanded commercial activities area, accessory sales would be permitted to go up to thirty percent of gross floor area, and it also would be permitted to include products that aren't manufactured, repaired, warehoused, or wholesale on-site, as long as they're complementary to, you know, somewhere that's a product manufactured on-site. So businesses are currently not allowed to have products that aren't manufactured on-site or in the exact category. Um, and often it doesn't really make sense if you're making, for example, opt-ins and selling them in a, in a local shop, um, and you need to add, like, uh, offer something that's easy to take away with them, uh, often makes sense, and it makes the business more viable, so, um, to manage that, the, the assay parts would have to be less than fifty percent of the accessory sale items and occupy less than fifty percent of the accessory sales and sales space. And next, I'll talk about fitness centers. Uh, they would be permitted as a use within the expanded commercial activities area. The definition of fitness center would be amended and clarified that licensed healthcare or personal service establishment would be an acceptable accessory use to the fitness center. Um, and there, there'd be a restriction to a maximum of twenty percent of gross floor area that they could occupy within the fitness center. Uh, this regulation is proposed to reflect some current practices and stakeholder agreement we got through the process of the fitness center in there. Um, we have received some feedback that, uh, to communicate, we should be careful about how much space can be allotted, um, to, uh, accessory, uh, licensed healthcare personal services establishments, uh, and that's just to ensure that, that regulation is in use. Uh, so we, we do intend to follow the regulations for it to look at, um, the appropriate requirements around, but twenty percent space is best people's enough. And then, outside the expanded commercial activities area, several zoning changes proposed that intended to support industrial uses and will introduce potential conflict with commercial activities. The new restaurants would not be permitted. Uh, property fees that were grandfathered spot zone during the creation of I eleven zone would be rezoned to accessory restaurants as opposed to restaurants. Uh, and accessory restaurants will be considered for manufacturing businesses that were established under the I one zone, as you guys mentioned before, where we are aware that a future restaurant will start the business plan. So we, we really wanted, um, respecting those businesses that established under the I zoning might have that ambition, and then, um, something changed as we were trying to get ready for this, um, zoning update process. Uh, new fitness centers would not be permitted. New auto-oriented commercial and buildings in my outlets would not be permitted south of industrial way. Um, I want to note that comments have been received regarding, um, concerns fiscal results and unintended consequences, and so one example due as we, uh, I'll have this, in estate or target restrictions to clarify that the restrictions are specific to auto viewers and large format buildings in my outlets. Um, office space in the I eleven zone will only be permitted as an accessory use to a permitted use of, of industries. Um, identified existing office space in the I eleven zone, those separate entrances would receive spot zoning, um, and that's because we would add a regulation in that requires those offices that are accessory to not have a separate entrance. We want to make sure that they really do have that, um, component that is supporting the industrial space and separate entrances that are considered, um, something that undermines that, so we want to have a requirement that they, if you don't have separate entrances. Um, but in recognition of current supply, supply constraints on office night, temporary uses permits should be considered in essential and frozen parts of the business park. Well-proposed office inventory is developed within the community. We do have a tight office supply market, and so we think that temporary use forms are a tool that would be used to bridge the gap between now and when some of that office supply comes online, mostly in the downtown area. And then, uh, the definition of trade contractor facility would be clarified to specify that office space, uh, must occupy less than fifty percent of the space to ensure that trade contractor facility uses and, uh, is appropriately applied, appropriately applied. And finally, the regulation permitting cannabis production facilities deemed within two hundred meters of another, um, facility is supposed to be removed, and that's because some of the concerns that existed when that regulation was drafted haven't really, um, come to pass, and so we don't think that regulation necessarily applies. And following presentation of these proposed zoning amendments in the virtual open house, we've got feedback through a survey, uh, in Congress to support the proposed use of zoning included the following: proposed zoning provide flexibility, which is important to businesses' success in growth. Many business headaches require things like a warehouse, retail space, and office space, and so the flexibility is just given. Um, the proposal offers a big balance for adjacent product. Uh, this part of patio space and bike parking was appreciated. Uh, accessory sales were identified as important, and the proposed regulations were likely changed, and the addition of a accessory license to healthcare opportunity in fitness centers was seen as positive. Um, this next one I note, I did emphasize the two, or the five percent council, but this one's left, uh, widened, uh, two flights down, so apologies for the use of the map. Um, so the concerns were highlighted around the expanded commercial activities areas, and it brought about the two camps. Some people felt the proposal, uh, proposal was too restrictive, and others saw it as supermissive. Those that thought it was too restrictive indicated that they didn't think there was a natural location option provided in the expanded commercial activities area, that it really was too small and too covered more area, and they also felt that, and there were some people also felt that the regulations were too stringent, and that more office space should be required. Uh, those that felt it was supermissive felt that allowing commercial in the business park at all would negatively impact their commercial centers, like the dent cements there above the area. Uh, they felt that commercial uses were continuing to push light industrial over in the top, and finally, light industrial and commercial uses were identified as incompatible, and so, um, concern for raises the idea of bringing them into the park, or supporting them for the rest of the park. Uh, examples included, you have concern around parking impacts, or, um, you know, in terms that, all right, some of these uses just shouldn't be permitted, such as fitness centers. Sorry, I'm going to move on. Uh, and then, um, one other aspect under consideration related to the business park relates to medium industrial businesses. Engagement and analysis identified a set of medium industrial businesses that really have significant outside space needs that are a part to a company in our community, that there are really, um, opportunities to get land that meet those needs. And the open land demand model did indicate that there's a potential supply deficit of these areas within the next six years under some growth scenarios. The draft is, staff considers suitable undeveloped parcels in the business park with the intensive industrial land use designation, which could support medium industrial activities. On the screen in the, in the map there, those parcels that meet that criteria are outlined in yellow. Uh, the purple land use designation that they're within is the intensive industrial land use designation, with blue is the intensive, is the industrial business, so that the purple is really what's intended for medium industrial, and the blue is intended more for light industrial uses. Um, the parcels that are identified in yellow are currently zoned for light industrial, which doesn't even include some commercial activity, but given the limited quantity and potential near-term constraints on medium industrial land, these parcels may be more appropriate to be zoned I three to the general industrial zone. Uh, so that's something to, is that, considering the proposal is to move those to I two zoning, um, and there are a couple provisions that are under consideration, regulatory provisions. Uh, the first is to only apply the I three zone to the two or large parcels, which are over three hectares and located adjacent to the railway tracks. Large parcels are more conducive to medium industrial land uses. And the second is to establish a regulation on the parcels that mandates a minimum lot area for storage, reflective of medium industrial needs, as we've heard through engagement that medium industrial uses, uh, dispensing outside space, and to the disposal of their deal, minimum lot area for outside storage for thirty percent, intended to ensure that these parcels could be available for those medium industrial uses. Um, regarding this proposal, uh, we did get some feedback, as of course, um, that feedback suggested that, uh, there really isn't, um, a lot of opportunity for medium industrial in the community, um, and that the need for land for these industries is, is really important. But there were a quite few concerns expressed regarding this proposal. I think in the landowners of Brussels, uh, most of Brussels expressed frustration, noting how it would disrupt their proposed light industrial developments. And then other concerns were identified. Um, one was the proximity of the medium industrial in the north end to the mud zone where we have residential land. Uh, other concerns suggested the land in question is more appropriate for light industrial use, and they highlighted that the, uh, the I three, recycling factory essentially revives subsidies to medium industrial businesses, um, and it's been suggested this is inappropriate given the land values in the business park. Uh, in addition, concerns in raised regarding overestimation of the demand and economic benefits for medium industrial businesses, noting that there's a lower light density in these operations compared to light industrial. And a concern was also expressed that even if the zoning was amended to I three, medium industrial would be unlikely to materialize in the areas given the land values, and that the land would likely just sit at the loss for going light industrial opportunities. Uh, these comments reflect the commercial real estate, or reflect commercial real estate expertise, and suggests that unmet demand for light industrial or lower mean land is typically a, these projections in our demand model, and reflects concerns of large light industrial waste, which is open question, are the most likely locations to result in light industrial development, because they find use to scale enable larger projects that are more likely to develop than smaller projects. Um, so our next steps are to draft bylaws to implement the proposed amendments. Uh, we're going to incorporate any personal feedback received and any additional stakeholder input that comes, um, over the next period. The information is still available online in survey documents, so if there's, um, more engagements that occurs, we're certainly happy to look at that and take into consideration. And then we'd like to bring the bylaws to council for consideration before the end of the year. Um, our recommendation is that council receives the report, provide feedback, and that zoning amendment, uh, can be included stage two of the zoning law update, uh, be based on my feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Uh, and before I turn it over to council, are there any particular areas of focus you want us to, to have when we're giving feedback, or is it sort of wide open?
Yeah, it is wide open, although I, I would certainly be interested to hear your counsel's thoughts on the medium industrial, um, I three proposal, uh, and that is probably one of the biggest entertaining questions, um, and really is going to reflect, um, you know, intention as to, um, the desire to, to support that, uh, those uses in the business park.
Okay, council, why don't we start off with a round of questions, and then we'll probably start mixing questions and comments. Uh, Councilor French.
Yeah, I'd like to know, um, how the percentage of gross floor area for the expanded commercial areas reached, uh, how would that number determine? Was there data involved in coming up with those percentages, or was it simply a case of crap and dark toward a dark word?
Um, which, which, are you talking about like the thirty percent of, um, space to be used for restaurants, for example?
Yeah, and twenty percent for expanded commercial?
Oh, you mean accessory retail sales?
Yeah, I'm interested in, because one's thirty and one's twenty. So how, how, how are those percentages arrived?
Okay, um, so through you, um, the, the fifty percent for restaurants, um, there's a few different factors, but one of the things we're doing is we're looking at data information from the, uh, um, existing operations as to the number of features they have currently applied to restaurants within their book. They're not currently, um, regulated by size or regulated by seats, and, um, the, in a range of percentages, the top end of the percentage that was applied to restaurant in an interim situation was thirty percent. Uh, and so, uh, given that they aren't currently under restrictions in their setting with that as well, inappropriate, um, amount to still reflect the fact that they're industrial businesses, it also allows the opportunity to, to, to extend if the business expands. So that was targeted at the, uh, separate chapter restaurants. It also does reflect, um, an intent to be cautious in expanding commercial activities, or a figure of this step, um, rather than, if you did, it would be, it was a, a small step that, um, seems like it would offer a digital opportunity without, um, compromising the intent of the, you know, some industrial nature of that, of restaurants. Um, for accessory sales, um, so accessory sales is proposed to be thirty percent. Right now it's twenty percent that's, um, currently permitted, and that one was more just a game and either, it was announced this time. We did, in the, um, stakeholder engagement for, uh, this, um, project, we did offer options to be considered to, 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 to,
And then a larger parcel of the area that's behind. Uh, I'm curious if that's really, um, a practical area for medium industrial, having a few small parcels, for example. Would they be better used for something that's catered to higher traffic, being something on the, on the street? Um, and also as a pivotal factor to businesses across the street that, um, are, sort of, the medium industrial. And comment is, uh, whether they belong there at all. Uh, and the reason I say that is this term medium industrial, uh, you know what came up the first time in one of our, um, studies? Uh, and it's identified as something that is just more of a piece of the light industrial, but doesn't sort of technically fall by the heading of the, I don't know, maybe something like that. So, um, and at the time, this, uh, this is not this conference or article, but we asked for the medium one before that. We had a discussion on spaces for those types of uses might be appropriate. Uh, in my recollection, um, was that the more of areas around the airport, um, decent rail yards, et cetera. Uh, as opposed to the business park, which, as we've all known, is mixed with light industrial. And kind of, if you like, pricier or meter, um, physicals than you know, on a medium industrial site. And I certainly agree with the need to space the medium industrial. Uh, but I'm just wondering, rather than there, would it be considered other areas, um, where that might be developed in, in, in spaces, all those types of businesses? More yards, airport, things of that nature?
Yes, okay, so through you, Mayor, I was going to try and share that screen again, but I don't think I have share functionality anymore. I just wanted people to be able to see that image. Is there ability to do that share functionality again?
I think you should have it now.
You just do.
Oh, just doing it.
Okay, yeah. I'll just wait until I get it out. Are you all watching or whatever? Okay, um, yeah, so I I think those are really good questions and actually really interested to hear your counsel thoughts on that. But I think I can provide, um, some context from client, client perspective. Um, so, uh, I think when looking at the, um, business park and trying to think about how this might be used, one of the things we were really trying to keep in mind was the results of employment, um, uh, space demand model. And really one of the big findings there was that of all the different spaces, retail is definitely something that's going to be tight. And medium industrial could really be tight. Um, and so because that medium industrial space, you should be able to seriously navigate trying to do that. Uh, sure. Um, are you now able to see that image of the?
Yes.
The business here? Great, okay. So, so that, um, this medium industrial space really is the, the space that if we have real success in our, um, sector action plan. And we have growth in, in some of those sectors that rely on that medium industrial space, they could really come under pressure and not have locations to go to. Um, and the light industrial, we do have, you know, there, there's more opportunity for light industrial space to meet the projected demand. Um, now, we may have, uh, underestimated projected demand, there may be more unmet demand that exists that could suck up that light industrial space. So that's what I keep in mind, but, um, it's clear that we don't have a lot of space for the medium industrial businesses. And so in working on this project, I think from a sectoral perspective, we felt like it would be really inappropriate not to look for those locations where medium industrial spaces could occur. And in the business park, even though, I think everything you're saying is true, um, those parcels that are along Queensway, um, they certainly could have, um, a great utility for businesses that may use that front. If they are close, they could provide offering if there is, um, medium, medium upper behind it. And I totally agree with you that, um, so, uh, yes, these parcels could be used well for light industrial. And those larger parcels, it's an open question as to whether or not those would be appropriate to, um, constrain to medium industrial users. The upside is that we really don't have many places for medium industrial to go. Do you, I guess, there might be other places that medium industrial could go, but really the bulk of other locations, medium industrial to land, it's in site B and the GFM. Both of which require quite extensive, um, development activities to occur to really unlock the medium industrial potential. Uh, and so there's, there's constraints going forward. So if we wanted to find space to house the industrial activities, these are some of the spaces that could be used. Uh, it's not a perfect fit, but it is, probably has, um, some high values in, in light industrial use. There are some potential conflicts with the mud zone at the north end. Um, so I think it's really going to come down to like a, a decision around, you know, how important is finding medium industrial, uh, for land for that, those sectors that could use it? Uh, how important is that? And if we are looking for that really hard, these are places they could go. There's, there's compromises and do not, um, but if, if it fails, we may want to consider. And so that's why we kind of negotiated and then brought forward as a potential idea. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Good for now.
Okay, uh, so I have Counselor Herford and then Mayor Elliott. And then Counsel Anderson.
Actually, thank you, um, Mr. Gunn actually answered my, uh, my last, most of my last question to that last bit, so I'll pass this one. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. Um, uh, while we're on the topic of medium industrial, um, I have a couple of questions. So, um, the, the definition of industrial includes some uses that probably wouldn't be compatible in those yellow polygons. I'm thinking pulp mill. Um, and, uh, sawmill, pulp mill. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's a way to better tailor that industrial definition for those yellow polygons that still allow for a medium industrial use? But would exclude some of those, uh, uses that would be controversial for their neighbors, um, in that area? And I, so I'm just curious about that, whether we could tighten that up.
Uh, through the chair. Yeah, so it's a, it's a great point and actually, yes, getting into the nuance of the industrial zoning we have in our community. Um, if you actually read the industrial, uh, definition and the light industrial definition, there actually isn't a big variation between the two. And the actual difference between our light industrial and medium industrial zone, which is the I three and then the I one and the, and I one and much of light industrial zones. Is not as much the industrial use as it is the other uses that are permitted along with it. That's really the difference in, in the land we kind of trivial industrial and medium industrial, all the extra stuff that comes along in those zones. Um, and so, uh, when you're, when you start, um, uh, identifying, you know, uses that can be undesirable in a location like this. Uh, then, um, what we don't have really right now is a lot of, uh, strong language. There is some language around, um, uh, impact offsite in the medium industrial zones. But we don't get into what uses we would not permit. It's certainly something we could explore. And at the end of this project, we did actually think a bunch about and investigate a bunch about, um, trying to structure the industrial uses around offsite impacts. So rather than structure them around those permitted uses or, or these activities that, that occur, we looked at trying to structure them if they should be built around how much impact occurs offsite. But there, it felt like there was going to be so much tempo for anything, the consequences in going down that road. That, um, we've actually moved back to utilizing what we have and then trying to have the permitted uses in the zone reflect what we've ended up wanting to have. Uh, the additional uses of the industrial. But to answer your question, if, um, there was a desire to allow I three on those parcels, but there was concern around specific uses that might create challenges. It would be, um, quite an easy, uh, process to, um, move uses that can be permitted on those particular parcels. The challenge would be, um, would we get them right? It's very hard to get at everything that could be considered, um, uh, undesirable. And so it'd be easy to miss certain things, uh, in that process. I think if, did you find that I three, you use, there has to be a certain level of, um, uh, acceptance that there may be something that shows up there that, that isn't, um, you wouldn't want to have necessarily. Uh, some commercial uses like adjacent to it, there, there would probably be some adjacent to these issues in the future with certain types of uses. Does that answer your question?
Well, it, it does, and it remains an outstanding concern. And if we're, we're tackling marine zoning as part of phase two, um, some of these uses can be moved out of the definition of industrial and put into a category called marine industrial. Um, but I know in other places, you know, we've excluded storage through a bylaw or we've excluded specific things. So whether we do it through a description of, of the impact or whether we actually move towards excluding some uses, I think we have to recognize that this is, and to the north anyway. The mud zone that it touches is the least residential of the three zones in the mud zone, so I'm not too concerned about that. But they will have light industrial neighbors and, and so we, we have to accommodate that, I think. Um, the other question I have just generally around employment related zoning is have any jurisdictions actually looked at the employment density? So number of jobs per, per area versus just uses?
Through you, Chair, I have spent a lot of time looking at a lot of industrial zones. Um, I drew BG and, and other areas that kind of emphasize as well. And I have never seen any zoning based around employment density. I think that's the type of, um, uh, that I think you might see that more in policy work. Um, and density, employment density from our work, um, and including the employment land base. Uh, usually the, the work that's around, um, employment density revolves around coming up with average employment density for sectors or types of permitted uses. And then figuring out how many square meters of space, um, you can attribute to, uh, to a land mass that includes those sectors. And so the, uh, you know, I think if you were doing work there on employment density, you would say, well, what's a high density, um, type of employment? Uh, how much space can we make sure we get out of that? Or what regulations do we try and draft to allow the maximum, of course, um, for the square footage in that particular category? Um, I think that's about the kind of extent of what I could imagine trying to drive employment density aside from policy work that's tries to get more land or encourage other sectors.
Okay, just one more question on the medium industrial. Um, it says that we would have requirements to dedicate a minimum lot area for storage. So what do we hope to achieve by doing that?
Yeah, great question. So that, um, when, uh, when looking at medium industrial and trying to, um, find places for medium industrial to land. Um, we're engaged with medium industrial activities in the communities and talking about what are their space needs. And really significant needs for those communities, really, uh, for those businesses, we're really kind of defining, um, those businesses is that they often have raw products coming in. And needing to be stored on site, then getting processed in a facility and, and needing to be exported. And so that, that there needs to be more space for the finished goods to be stored while waiting for transportation, um, whether it's, uh, you know, moving to, um, mostly moving around to truck. Uh, and so that external space for, um, goods is raw materials to be stored and, uh, and to export is really important. And that can be done inside as well, but the cost of having inside space to do that is, is higher and, and some product for a big one, it's just how, I think, you're in that. With industry, for example, having to look come in to the outside for a big one, and then having it in a building. Um, so it's, it's really, um, the space that is needed to bring in product and then to put your finished product before it gets shipped out. And, uh, when you have, um, those businesses that need that, that amount of space. Um, if you are in a higher, um, value piece of land, uh, it's more expensive to have that open space. And so, uh, from talking to some of these businesses in the community, um, often the amount of space they need for, for storage is actually quite high. So upwards of like seventy percent, eighty percent, really high amounts of space to put, you know, to be part of the law and then finish it up, ready to go out, something like that. Uh, and so the, when, uh, when we have development in our business park, what usually happens is there's an attempt to maximize the square footage, we can pull space. And then, um, parking needs to be supplied to meet parking requirements for that square footage. And so you really don't get very much space at all for storage, storage becomes a problem. So the intention is to say, okay, well, if we are trying to support those types of businesses, they're going to be ready in product manufacturing and then exporting that product. There needs to be recognition that there's, there's likely to keep that, that cost by all those businesses, some exterior space for that use. And, you know, uh, some of the businesses in town that we talked to would probably, you know, suggest that you need really big, for, for, like, I said, upwards of seventy percent. Um, but this, the intention of using thirty percent from the schedule of these stakeholders, um, they're showing that, well, that's a, that represents that space needs to be there. Um, you know, major workers in specific businesses that are in the community, but they work for other businesses. Um, and, you know, signal this, actually ensure that, that those, um, locations would have, uh, that ability to, to bring product in and export. And if they keep saying they cost of their, um, space for, for that manufacturing activity, or, and then it goes forward, we'll go with this invite one.
Mr. Harsh, uh, thank you. Uh, for what matters, the, the space, open space department also then allows for businesses to share those shipping facilities. Uh, whereas if the shipping facilities are in the building, uh, you know, and they're much more likely to be used by one user. Uh, and so every user would then have to have a shipping facility versus having a centralized outside space.
Thank you. I've got more, but on the commercial side.
Okay, uh, so I'll go to Counselor Anderson, then I'll put myself on the list, and then I'll come back to Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to jump right into the I three proposal, applying to I three on Queensway. But I'd like to, with your indulgence, uh, sir, give us some more general comments, uh, along the lines of where we've been speaking. I'm in favor of a, of a cautious approach on medium industrial in this initiative. And to some of the questions and issues and, and ideas that are suggested, I'll say that we need a more nuanced picture. And to understand that all of us, I know the land departments, we involve in a number of discussions, but to understand and also for the public and our engagement with the public, who these stakeholders are and what is at stake. Um, we hear in the feedback, uh, including the letter from Mr. McCarthy, uh, that we're going to win some and lose some. That economic benefits of medium industrial may be overestimated. And then may, may not, may not be able to pay the rates, so they should not be subsidized. These kinds of reactions, they're quite understandable. However, we need medium industrial, in addition to the characteristics that we've just been addressed through Mr. Valencius and Mr. Gunn about manufactured raw materials, is also infrastructure. And, uh, so they have community functions and infrastructure, we need to see this aspect of this landscape as well. A bus fleet facility, for example. Um, ocean marine or, or a, a light or a marine boat facility. These are community functions we would expect and hope to have here in this climate that we need to plan for. Uh, if we look at the businesses and properties that are going to be displaced, uh, through our rezoning and, and O E P changes in the past, there's about twenty lot properties and about that many businesses as well scattered around town. And I provided a list of these, uh, some time ago. They are characterized to a large extent by fleets and equipment, uh, storage and repair. That's truck fleets, uh, heavy equipment fleets. This is a category that's definitely vulnerable. There are a lot of these types of businesses that we don't want to have to go to surgery or, or Langley to get a little bit, to move a piece of equipment. And that just drives costs up, not only for forestry, but construction. Uh, we don't want to take our car to North Bend for an auto body repair, uh, and these types of things. So in the end, there are functions and infrastructure for, for all of you that we need to plan for. And we have tools like the O E P and our highlighted secondary plans of business park from two thousand two, which highlighted all of that area west of Queensway as heavier industrial. And that was carried over from where those lands came from. They were a gift from the railway. The railway was a park during the establishment with the industrial park. And the idea was to have that heavier industrial activity on that side. And we've gone away from that. And, uh, what we do need to be permanent our plans to send the right signals. We also have plans in our economic development strategy and goals there. So I think that's my kind of high level response to some of the comments we've received. It's just to remind us, to try to remind the conversation that these are functions and infrastructure. Now, the company's particular parcels on, uh, Queensway, uh, I, I have some, some questions or some observations on what has been included and not included. Uh, so we have at, uh, two parcels that So we have at two parcels that are identified along, they're on Queensway, at Norberti and the Southern. They're about half a hectare each. Well, just around the corner, there's a sawmill. Eleven twenty-six resolution way is a sawmill. And among everything, they provide cables and tops and densey woods for a lot of the businesses in the Business Park, including the craft brewery, that's where it came from, those cable tops. That sawmill is the same size as the half hectare. It had been through all kinds of discussions with neighbors and services and they wanted to stay put there. They were lucky to find that parcel. The previous occupant of that was a truck fleet and logging equipment fleet for repair. And that migrated to Gulf Green Avenue and now it's going to need to migrate elsewhere. Yeah, where to? The next, on eleven twenty-three resolution, is a business that is DCT fencing. They have large outdoor storage, truck logistics in there. So my question, why won't we consider that parcel also in the discussion? It illustrates the two things, medium industrial, but also it illustrates, or kind of the question of what is a building spire? And maybe there's some issues there and I'm happy to hear from Matt Gunn that there'll be some further investigation of these definitions for auto-oriented, but I would also include this building spire. What do we mean there? What would we capture there, maybe unintentionally? Because that might be considered that. But anyway, that property owner actually desired to be included in the heavy industry zone, the industrial, intensive industrial, OCP designation that is. So my question where I'm coming to here is I'd like to take a conservative approach and I think we need to hold on to all of those parcels, highlighting them young. And we need to understand in a more nuanced way what those businesses all around town that are here currently, going to need to find a new place, who are they, what are they? Let's take a closer look. It's not going to be a pulp mill, it won't be another sawmill there, although it's interesting the point of it is one right next door. So that's my response, is just that I'm in favor of the conservative approach. I'm not concerned if other parks in the mud zone and the northern land. I'll leave my comments to that. Thank you.
Did you have some thoughts, Mr. Gunn?
Um, through you Chair, I, no, I think they're all good points. You know, I think the concerns that have been raised by Counselor Anderson still aren't here in our employment land city, our demand model and was the driver of trying to identify these locations. You know, the question around why we haven't applied or proposed applying the active zone to other properties, was really we're focusing on where there was the most potential for ensuring that medium industrial occurs. So we focus on undeveloped properties, but you know, the direction is to, I agree, generally to all potential medium or current medium activities in that area, that's something that could be done. The, I think, I think the one question that I have would be, you know, I feel like there's a suggestion that we should look for each of the businesses in town that are trying to find a location to land and, you know, map out where exactly that might occur. I'm not sure I understand completely that point. I think we're trying to kind of take a high-level perspective and say, okay, we know that these sectors need this type of land, let's make sure that we have that type of land. We haven't quite gone down to the level of applying slots for individual businesses and that needs to become quite a complex task and operation. But I think by trying to ensure there is a medium industrial land, we provide supply for those types of businesses.
Mr. Stone?
Hi there. Through you Chair, yes, I just wanted to add on to Matt's comment just with respect to medium industrial and actually just on the supply side. And right now I consider it a perception that perhaps the CC, our spot mature property, has space in it and it's actually, from my last conversation, nearly a hundred percent means. So a lot of that space that one sees on the medium industrial parcel or the real yard is actually related either to legume yard or just underdeveloped medium industrial parcel. So while there is potential for increased employment density and space and industrial opportunity on that parcel, I understand that it's current state today, there is limited opportunity to grow. So just want to put that into the considerations that with respect to the parcels that have been presented today during the presentation and also echo, those are findings that we saw from the employment-based model, that industrial land is constrained and as Matt alluded to, the cheap I F M and S B E, there are challenges and challenges for their development.
Thank you. So I'll share a couple of thoughts, then I'll go to Counselor Reese. I do have some questions on other topics, but I'll stick to the I three for now. I too have been struggling with, you know, what exactly do we mean when we say medium industry? I think for me, a small sawmill or something like that could work in my mind. But I am concerned about, you know, do we want to be using it for laydown for oil pipelines or gas piping or fracking rigs and that sort of thing? I'm not so sure about that. So I think, you know, how we're dedicating this land is important. The other thing too is we move towards more and more automation, the employment density of industrial lands, I think we can expect to see that go down. And so when we have such high-value land like a place in Squamish, do we want to use it for just laydown yards? Does that really make sense? Offsetting that a bit is the port and so, you know, that is maybe an argument for some laydown capacity. But those are things where I think for me, it will be important to put some fences around sorts of medium industrial, what exactly we want to see by medium industrial. And I think the other question, and this goes a bit more to all the topics, but I found myself asking, are we mostly trying to address what people right here, right now, say they want to grow? Or are we looking for, you know, a car-free future, dealing with a client emergency? What are the sorts of businesses that we need for that? And so if we resolve that right now, some people are going to grumble because it's not exactly what they need right now, but it sets us up for that future thing. So there's not a lot of parking. And so if you're starting a business, it needs to be one that doesn't depend on a lot of parking. And are we doing those sorts of things? Are we building in some incentives and bonusing for zero emissions buildings? I know the industrial sector tends to say, oh, well, we can't do zero emissions, it's too hard. But I think a lot of creativity in this town and I think these are the sorts of things that I'm looking to see too, how are we addressing? So I'll go to Counselor Reese.
Thank you. Interesting in the discussion about sawmill because one of the things I remember when this topic was first raised and I was referring to, when it came out of that study, one of the things we talked about was possibly the sawmill might qualify as a medium industrial activity. But I think, you know, listening to the comments and just kind of think this through, when Mary talked about tightening up the zoning and I can understand how difficult that would be, but is it necessary to go that far with the zoning? And we have more of a general definition and say that the ultimate zoning is going to be based on a proposal. And so, because there's industrial and there's industrial and the sawmills like the Interforest site with water from landing, which is quite attrusive and there's other ones like Counselor Anderson was describing, that again, it was heavily medium area. So there's things, there are differences, it'd be hard to capture in text. So the matter, from my perspective, I guess, I can understand the need for it, I'm not dating that. And it's going to be a while before we can get some of these other properties online. I think I can hear even short term. But I'm wondering if it's realistic, try to, because the problem, I think, is whether or not, how inclusive it is and how much it really kind of affects neighboring properties in the general favor. There are lots of emissions, there's lots of noise, there's lots of traffic, et cetera. And whether we can sort of pick and choose different activities, allow some and not others, just on a wait for the proposal basis. And as I say that, I'm trying to put myself in the position of a landowner who may be happy with his own like that, which opened up possibilities for medium industrial uses that sort of fit the neighborhood of the like. Can we ever, could we do something like that? Is that a practical thought?
Mr. Gunn?
Yeah, I think I would have two things to say on that. One, I do, I guess I do want to reiterate that I think as we try and get really specific with particular uses within categories, I really like, you know, I do think it can be challenging to foresee all the possibilities and opportunities, but we certainly pick up a few things that we want to see and say, hey, this is not permitted, that is not permitted. But the ability to foresee all the possibilities is quite challenging, I think. And we could end up, and one of the things I would question is that we could end up creating regulations that create challenges for businesses that we might have value for the community. So I think we should get more questions. One thing that we've been, that I did highlight earlier, but it has been brought up several times, is that it may be that if we say, hey, we want to restrict these properties to medium industrial, one possible outcome is that the property owners would say, hey, you know, that's, there's not enough value. We're just going to hold and wait, they may have that for a long time. It could be that we forego some development on these properties that could bring employment in the near term, given if we quit in zoning, that is undesirable from the landowner's perspective. So it's not a deep in terms of challenges with that approach.
Counselor Stone?
Thank you. I just wanted to seek clarification. So what was the zoning on these properties before we applied the I eleven zone last year? We know.
Yeah, so the zoning would have been, one of them is still I four, which is a variant of I one and the rest of them would be I one. I think there are pretty much all the I one industrial projects, kind of, in this area.
Okay. And then just following up on the conversation that Counselor Reese and Mayor Elliott were speaking to, I was trying to figure out where we have definitions of medium industrial and where they actually sit, because we don't have one in the zoning bylaw at the moment. The OCP policy does figure out that we clarify and differentiate like industrial and medium industrial and heavy industrial in the zoning bylaw. And there is a definition for medium industrial in the OCP. And so I wonder if we can use that language to help support something that is this interim that had a little bit more definition around it as to what we mean by medium industrial as opposed to simply going to the I three, which is, as I already said, a little bit more on the heavy industry side.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a great question and one that we spend a bunch of time exploring, the, recognizing that there is direction in the OCP to try and address that. At the outset of this project, we looked around and tried to see what other communities had for medium, heavy and light industrial definitions and how that can be applied to the Squamish context. Our light industrial, I think, is pretty straightforward, but the challenge becomes in what is heavy industrial, what is medium industrial, how you differentiate those. And that call in the OCP came from the employment land strategy from a number of years ago. And in that strategy, what they identified was that we really only have heavy industrial at probably two locations, Wood River for sure and potentially the terminals. And their distinction is around, it really is around impact, how those impacts are, that even the central impacts are off-site. And when we look at kind of parcel, medium and heavy industrial and in discussion with stakeholders through the process, there was a lot of concern raised around how easy it would be to parcel whether heavy versus light industrial was or heavy versus medium industrial was. And many of the stakeholders that were medium industrials felt like there was a big chance that in coming up with more specific definitions of those two, that it would be easy to wind up with any consequences where we were constraining medium industrial opportunities, which right now have a broad range of auctions. I would note that the, what if I recite now, which is zone I three, same zoning that we have here, is specifically noted as having the option of having the, I think I'm talking about the bulk gas exports option. And it's the only location in our community that's allowed to do that. And in a way, that essentially is created within the I three structure of heavy industrial, which is this distant location that is the only one allowed to have gas export and the rest of the community, which is I three, which is our general industrial. If we were going to be more nuanced, we would start picking uses that we only wanted to allow in the I three location that Wood River says. Or if we find other sites, start allocating those. But as in discussion with the industrial sector, there's lots of concern that that would start creating real hurdles for industrial organizations.
Thank you, Counselor Perford. And we've got about twenty minutes left, so if people want to think about, try and get all their comments in.
Thank you. As we're contemplating this I three usage, are there other parcels, like Counselor Anderson alluded to, one of the faults on the outside of this that's currently doing or having an I three usage on that site? And are we, and if so, are we doing enough to protect those, those current uses? So I'm worried about the effect of maybe reducing that to be somewhere else and just moving the existing ones over to these parcels that we're talking about, not actually having a net change, if that's what we decided that we need. So could you speak to that?
Yeah, I would say uses that have, and so the I, right now in the I three, we, I don't, I can't think of I three zones that are proposed or are going through removal of that zoning. For example, in the rain zoning, all of the areas that have I three, which are often adjacent or may never adjacent to the rain areas, that in that process, we have retained their I three zoning. We have proposed making changes to those industrial zones. But there are some properties where they have activities that I would consider medium industrial. And Counselor Anderson has highlighted a number of these that you can look in the inch area, a lot of these. There's a bunch of rural properties that are used for small businesses that do have quite a bit of external storage space needs. And, you know, there's right now, I, sorry for my presence, what's going on in that area. And out of the employment land or employment-based model, we really, in those discussions about employment-based on that, in that survey area, that information from the model has really helped inform us to understand that there is a need to ensure we do have, that we do preserve that for those type of uses in that area until that area is, hasn't completed in terms of survey planning process, but it's been informed by the discussions that have set this project.
Okay, thank you. I think that, actually, to shift some of these to the accessory, what's it called? Accessory retail sales and the percentages around that. You spoke to the accessory restaurant use as a percentage of square foot. And I assume that's for the seed area, not the whatever is involved in production because the whole rest of the facility can be involved in production, the seed area. Okay, so that's easy enough to calculate and thus checking on from time to time as needed. I think about the percentage of retail space or associated with those accessory sales. I'm setting, I think it was twenty percent and that's a, or a percentage of sales. But how, how often, or what's the mechanism to check this? I'm considering putting in endorsing regulations that doesn't have a regular check-in and results in. I understand most bylaws are complacent, but how is this to be, are new monitors?
Yeah, so for the accessory retail deals, for accessory deals, the amount of space dedicated to that would be assessed at the time when a kind of improvement was proposed. So if there's some renovations being done, so I have to create whatever the structure inside is going to be, at that time, there would be, you know, a discussion around, okay, we do what the center says allocated to sale. You know, if things change after that, it would be complaint driven in terms of going into a check. Certainly there is in the process identified to go and do, you know, kind of check inventory and check funding. the process identified to go and do, you know, kind of tech inventory and top funding and enforcement after, after we're into that.
Counselor Thomas.
Thank you. We do also check for this business licensing, so as businesses cycle through the state, we do building inspections of that as well, to make sure that the occupancy hasn't changed, and we do the inspections to that limit of accessory retail space.
Counselor Perford.
Thank you. The challenge I'm having with this, let me drop my head around the, the additional warehouse, you know, I have a warehouse on site, it just seems unverifiable or without some specific mechanism in place for that. So I don't have an issue with the usage, I'm more concerned about whether this is, how we can, whether we should be putting something in that I feel is near impossible to, to check practically. So I'd refer to anything as being a great leap of faith in that, yeah.
Yeah, I think you were talking about, that is a different question, the proportion of onsite versus offsite manufacturing product. And I believe that this is, I think it's a reflection of a, an understanding that that is likely a good opportunity if you find it, provide a retail environment. I think there are promptly examples out there, quite a few examples that fit into this, that already exist in that area, and are already doing that. And, you know, it's not something that we've tried to chase down or do enforcement on. I think it's trying to reflect what would make the most sense in this situation, but I agree that there would be challenges in trying to do enforcement. It's unlikely that we're going to go through and jump items. So there is challenges in enforcement there, but at the same time, I think the regulations probably are more effective of what makes sense and what is appropriate.
Counselor Thomas.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Thomas, I'll go back to.
Yes, and just to add to the business licensing process, you know, we don't delve into a lot of detail with those businesses in terms of exactly what they're selling, but it's an option that we have in this case to enforce if we needed to. You know, if there was a blatant breach of the zoning bylaw, we can then use the zoning bylaw to suspend the business license, and if you find, if it wasn't applied.
Counselor Per.
Thank you. I see, I support the aspirations of that particular restriction, I'm just concerned that it's, that it's promptly, but Mr. Perford just added some good context there, so I'm okay with all that.
Counselor.
Thank you. We spent a large amount of time while discussing the I-3 aspect, but office uses is another topic that perhaps we might not overlook. And it seems to me that some of the remarks input received, including by this McCarthy Commercial Realtor regarding office, I think are worthwhile to note, that is, that allowing office uses, we have to be mindful of the implications for the downtown, northeast. And so I'd just say we're a conservative approach in allowing office uses in this part, a leap of that topic. The lower mainland, these issues are also very acute, and I am sure that the planning department are learning and observing many things from our neighboring municipalities. Longtime Councilor Harold Steves in Richmond has a famous quote, "To preserve agricultural land, we need to preserve industrial land." They're both quite nice characters, and they have implications on each other down there, but it's just something, a principle that we need to be mindful of, that we, we don't leave either of these, we can't leave either of these categories of land uses to the market. The west side of Queensway, following on that, it has had subarea land designation and now an OCP designation that was in the same alignment for a long time, it's had the same OCP and subarea land designation since late seventies. And the company owners should be aware of that, and they are, of course. The 1121 commercial place did start a trend away toward office, in fact, and even the tenants there agree with this observation, why are we here? That was a project from several years back, and it was a trend away from that subarea plant. And now I think we're going back to some difficult, right, in our studies. I'd like to finally commend planning department for its openness and also economic development as a partner, openness to input, and I think you've done a great job in receiving and going despite the summer weather and the COVID constraints, and I'm happy to see the commercial realty sector stepping as well. Finally, it is on engagement, mentioned that the Squamish Nation hasn't been directly involved or at this point, but I believe it's important to at least make a reporting to the Squamish Nation. This is, this is critical because they are a key landowner with a large block of potential light industrial land right across from the Ross-Roody intersection in North of Bracken Dale, as well as other parcels that are familiar to everybody. So I think we should be mindful to keep Squamish Nation informed in order of our conversations. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gunner?
Yeah, that last point regarding the Squamish Nation, indeed, we continue to send updates, we sent several updates with information in hand. Because all of the information for the project, including videos of the open houses, are available on our website, it is all available for review and understanding, it's a sort of comprehensive set of information. And in the email discussion that we've asked, that if there's any interest in pursuing that discussion on it, we'd be open to it, but without having received responses, challenging to generate that conversation.
Thank you. Counselor French, should I see your hand? Yes, okay, please go ahead.
Just on the I-3 and potential restriction in uses, I would hesitate to restrict sawmill as a use, because I think that that large property to sell could potentially be a very suitable location for a sawmill operation. Pulp mill for sure, I don't think we want to see any pulp mill operation in our business as well. And I just also wanted to note that the restriction of access to office spaces leaves me reassured that we won't see an influx of office-oriented businesses trying to keep themselves in the business park. That restriction, I think, is going to quite effectively make sure that the downtown isn't abandoned in favor of office location visits in the park. And I think that's all I have for now, in my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving away from the I-3, how do we, so we're expanding some retail use in this area, but are you giving any thought to what you might change in the downtown or Garibaldi Village area to protect those as the prime location for office or retail, and retail?
Hi, this is the mayor. And so right now, this is, this goes on this aspect, and I think we haven't been looking at making changes at this point to retail requirements in the, you know, there is, and nothing concrete yet. What I would say is that our, the employment phase demand model shows that we are going to be under supplied on, I think we are under supply on retail, certainly in the next few years, and then moving along to the future, depending on what happens at Ocean Point, we could be under supplied for quite some time to come, easily into the next decade. And because there is likely going to be a significant under supply, well, sorry, not significant, but less supply than demand, then the need for that retail space, it shouldn't be let off to extend into the business park that would compromise the, the downtown and the, and Garibaldi Estates area or Garibaldi Village to attract retail tenants. My feeling is that there's, we aren't producing huge amounts of retail, and we're going to continue to need to look for those opportunities to meet demand. One thing I would say is that we're in the forefront, we are reviewing the, the employment demand model, employment phase demand model, and looking for kind of guiding principles on how to address the finding of that in, you know, discussion with development applicants and policy. And that is something that I'll read to you, you're not supposed to, but at some point, that's what we're coming to counsel for, you know, what direction we can take in the other commercial areas to meet the demand. But I don't see the amount of demand that we're proposing in the business park as being significant enough to offset the demand, because I do not think we're going to be operating that far to pull away from the other areas. I think there's, there's just more demand than not supply. There is a round of the, did that make sense?
Yeah, a little bit. I suppose it's, to me, is, is how you're going to define retail in this zone versus downtown or Garibaldi Village. So the red strip sort of goes along the highway, which would lend itself to more of a highway commercial use. But this, this area, if it becomes to retail, it doesn't drive the demand and therefore allow for investment in Garibaldi Village or downtown, because, I'm not sure if land's cheaper in this area anymore. But, but also, it drives people into their cars to get to this retail. So I'm just like, are we constraining the definition of retail in this area so that it differentiates itself from, from those two areas?
Yeah, okay, sorry. So, yeah, the retail that's proposed to be allowed in the commercial activity area, one, it has to be accessory to the industrial use. So the products that sold as retail have to be produced, distributed wholesale, or have to be related to that business. It can't just be any retail. Now, we are talking about giving a portion of that over to stuff that's complementary, but that's still within the category of something related to an industrial activity. There's a chain of products produced wholesale or distributed in this industrial activity, that's the bulk of the space using that, in that business. Then there's a portion, a 30% that could be used for retail, and then there's a portion of that, half of that could be something that's from, you know, that's an industrial site, but it is still a chain that goes back to a primary industrial business that's shaped that, so you've got at least 70% of that business. So there's some real constraints on what it is that can land there. Not just any retail business would be able to come in, really what we're trying to do is allow retail that helps make those industrial activities viable. Right? These are businesses that are coming in and trying to do it, you know, that business is trying to do something that will try and encourage in the area, and they're saying, hey, we need some, you know, some side sales to help make us sustainable. The retail in the other areas, the community don't have any of that, it's made or not required, man, actual wholesale, the superhand out there, it's pure retail. And so there's quite a distinction between those two. And then maybe better articulate, I think, from our projections, there is going to be a lot of demand for retail. And so we, I think we're going to continue to have that demand pushing into our commercial areas, like the downtown and the Garibaldi Village. But at the same time, we're, we're making sure that we're constraining it on the rest of the business park. So so far, we've been helping to encourage a lot of retail into our business park, you know, in the centers, the restaurant, those types of activities, and we're tightening up on what's happening in most of the business park, and allowing one area with a little bit extra that they're allowed to do. So I think we're, we're keeping a hold on what happens in the business park, and there's not demand that's going to still be flowing into the other area. I think our home is going to be finding more retail, both there in our downtown and Garibaldi Village areas, and in new areas that go to secondary line, and I think we're going to be looking for more.
Where do fast food restaurants fit in?
That's in the category of industrial office retail, it's a retail use.
Does it go in this expanded zone? Because there's already a lot of it in that I-9 zone.
No, then we have the little I-9 zone that's, that's allowed to have the restaurants, but under the current zoning, oh, sorry, under the I-1 zoning, restaurant wasn't permitted to use. Now we've shifted any new restaurants out of most of the park. And then in the I-4, in the expanded commercial activities area, we're saying it can only be an accessory restaurant. So we're tightening up the restaurant, it has to be selling something that's mani back on site. It can be other things out of this park, but maybe everything for a restaurant in the local area. But it's not any restaurant, just accessory restaurant.
Okay. Southern industrial, we grandfathered in a few folks that are, uses around car sales and like a Home Depot kind of. If they switch hands or discontinue use, do they lose their grandfathering?
No, the areas that were spot zoned, you have that area that's getting versatility unless we made a change to the zone.
Um, I'm, I'm glad that we're persisting with keeping restaurants and gyms from expanding in this area. I am still nervous about having space for personal services and gyms. I think that area should be very limited, for the same reasons I am nervous about putting retail next to industrial uses. And there was one comment in your notes from folks that were concerned about the proposed regulations being too restrictive, and they said transportation and infrastructure are not ready for the scale of businesses that will land in the expanded commercial activities area. What was meant by transportation and infrastructure?
Yeah, unfortunately, there was not a lot of detail to follow up on that comment. And I often, I think, what I do hear from industrial businesses is that one of their big challenges is the ability to do shipping and that sell of our, some of the buildings that we have with, in our surveys, where, you know, maybe manufacturing something or distributing something, that those sites don't always have the traffic flow to allow to come in, move and exit easily, and that can create real challenges. And then we continue to hear, social parking is also a challenge. You know, one of the things we've heard from some of the potential businesses that want to land in the business are that they kind of say they like it, they want to bring their business here, they want to expand, but that the, there is not enough parking for their employees and clients. And this is a trade-off between how do we make sure we have the space for these businesses to land and to, to employ people, but then have enough parking to support people coming in, into work and whatnot. And so, you know, there are other activities they're working on trying to improve or attempt that works, so there's easier ways to get some, we're getting increasing the bike parking for some of the users that people come in to use that. The parking continues to be a challenge, and maybe that is, I want to be honest, that is what our, I'm guessing, but, you know, that's what we, you know.
Finally, does the patio space, if someone chooses their accessory restaurant to have patio space, is that included in their 30%?
Uh, no, I think the way we've drafted it is not included in 30%, it's an accessory or an addition. And the idea is that those patios really aren't going to be functional for a good chunk of the year, and that, you know, in some time when it's nice, it gets utilized, we take up the, the, some front spaces, like is that what bike parks, is that's what people are doing, or maybe more, reduce the impacted cost coming in, and is essentially a bonus of beyond 30%.
I think we need to be cautious, because already people are thinking about how to winterize their patios through the pandemic. And certainly, rather than Australia, all patios were winterized, and you could be outside all year long. So I think that may be a false assumption, and we just need to be, be careful as we build out this zone about what that patio is for, because you could put a tent over it and some heaters, and you could be out there year-round. So I, I think we have to address that, in the same way that we're trying to get people outside and active all year long in our public spaces and our public realm by providing cover. We have to think about that in terms of how people start to envision patios from here on out.
Yeah, okay, that's something we can certainly look into and consider. I think a lot of the opportunity for, for creating patios is going to be driven by the ability to accommodate a range of businesses that are in any given site, where they have multiple tenants. And I know that from landlords' perspective, their owners are looking to releasing these pieces, that they're constantly balancing how to make sure everybody has parking. And so I suspect that there'll be some willingness for people are able to achieve because of the need to ensure that everybody has parking within the business. But I'm assuming we can look into this, and that'll be accurate.
Counselor Stone, just before I start in, I want to make sure I miss your hand. Okay. So a few thoughts. Okay. So a few thoughts I had, just as we're talking about bike parking, I think we need to be thinking about charging for e-bikes in the bike parking. And it's not level-two charges, just some basic plugs that people can maybe plug their e-bikes into. The, you know, I did touch on how we're building in emissions incentives and how we are designing this in the parking for businesses that are not car-dependent. And so I'm thinking about numbers and ratios. I hope that is top of mind. This is something I brought up before. I think there's a startup class of business. I don't just mean tech startup, all types of startups. But I believe we have a big population of professionals that is still commuting down to the city who, to my mind, are prime candidates to startup businesses here that are in line with our target sectors. And when I think of the sort of space that's most appropriate, it's generally what we consider light industrial now, although that particular zoning doesn't always allow for that use. And I think, I'm concerned that in planning's mind, sometimes we assume that office would be more appropriate there. And so I was sort of hoping to see in this some better accommodation for a startup-type business, something along the lines of light industrial. And one of the reasons I think this is relevant, in particular with some proposals as we are expanding the ability for commercial uses in some of the light industrial spaces, is that then taking away some of this startup space, what I would consider startup space. So I think that's something we need to pay a bit of attention to. I do think for businesses, you know, some of the commercial attached to industry makes a lot of sense for supporting those industrial businesses and for people who do have the businesses there, being able to get lunch and use some services while you're at work and being able to walk to it is quite valuable. But I think that's one element we've missed a little bit. Just ahead here. I did, the mention of, there's a site that allows bulk gas export. I really have to wonder why we have that in a climate emergency. And that's something I think we need to think about and maybe revisit sooner rather than later. Yeah, and I guess, just to make sure that I'm being clear on the startup. And I think what a startup is often looking for is something that is low cost, like light industrial. It's not finished necessarily, and is incredibly flexible. Because you may quickly pivot from more of a warehousing to a manufacturing to a more of an office use. And those changes can happen within a matter of weeks. And so some sort of space that is very, very basic, but any of those uses can be accommodated, and the switch can happen quickly. I think that's the desire and the piece that I think we need to carve out somehow in the business park. And I'm not sure quite what the answer is. Mr. Gunn?
Yeah, you know, so first I would say there's still research being done on what the needs are for us. They have to engage in understanding better specific state needs. And so certainly, if there's more, I guess, from that, we'll look at accommodating that. But the, I would say that a commercial activity area actually does have quite a bit of flexibility. The ability to do light industrial is certainly present there. The office minor is certainly going to be an accessory office. And with the extended retail opportunity, really, the three categories of uses there are all to some extent enabled. And so if a business were located in that area, they would be able to transition through those different uses without any kind of zoning challenge. On the footside, the challenge of ensuring that that space is basic and inexpensive is a bit harder one to tackle. You know, and as we have, you know, more uses, like more permitted, especially commercial uses, like the office or the retail aspect, the chance of the space will be inexpensive, is probably declining. And also the likelihood that it will be finished at a very simple level is probably declining because developers are probably looking to maximize their abilities to, I have to re-slate lease rates for those properties that they have more permitted uses. There's more sense, people think so, or they probably want to go higher in tenants. And so they're probably, you know, more finishing it. So there's a little bit of a challenge, meaning both of those at the same time in our existing location. But certainly providing the flexibility for certain lots to go through re-activity, that's something that we have been able to do in this proposal, I would say.
Thank you. Counselor Stone, I did see your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Just to maybe think of, besides this, I think we have a path, maybe a little bit outside the topic, but in terms of opportunities for facilitating affordable industrial lands and sort of kind of similar to a CAC policy that we have for affordable housing, is there an opportunity, something similar for industrial lands and supporting them? At least on that, what is coming in that affordability zone?
Yeah, it's not something, maybe you could refer to that question. It's not something that we have actively engaged in pursuing to figure out. I think it's like, I've heard of, you know, discussion around having a, not just an agricultural land reserve, but an industrial land reserve or something like that. If that's, if trying to ensure there are, if, that any kind of spaces at specific price points, was a project that I think that would be something that would have to be directed by council as a co-in initiative. I don't know that it's something that we can handle with the project of this. I think that might be a fairly wholesome project to identify and manage. And yeah, I would say that's something to, I would, I would also very much address a lot.
Mr. Nossis, did you want to add something?
No, I just wanted to, with that, it definitely would be not a project in itself, probably quite an undertaking.
Okay, Counselor Stone, it's a wish.
Yeah, I just said I didn't intend to roll it into this project writing, so I appreciate the word of caution there. But I do think it's something that's interesting to keep in mind, and I'll see how we can maybe hold that in the future. But generally, I am part of the direction that this is going. I think I was hesitant at first when I was reading the staff report about the expanded commercial activities areas. Mainly from that, when you get to this point of flexibility, it's tough because it feels like you are addressing a lot of, for everybody's concerns. But perhaps it's too much compromise and we're not really pleasing anybody. But I do think that we are giving a cautious approach here and restricting it to this general area will ensure that we are able to support that light industrial activity outside of these areas where we have already seen growth in those more retail or commercial-oriented operations. So I think that we are landing somewhere really close here with the commercial activities areas. And I will just reiterate that I am supportive of moving towards a more medium or industrial zoning for the other properties that were identified. I do think we need some clarity exactly on that medium industrial in some way, shape, or form. Appreciate that that might be difficult to do, and there's sort of unintended consequence there. But I don't think that the I three as is is a blanket correct zone. But I do think that aligning that with the OCP designation is part of this process and I have to just put that. Thank you.
So Counselor Anderson, we're over time. I'll make a really quick comment and then maybe move the receipt of the report.
Thank you, Chair. It is a quick comment, I hope. I just wondered whether Planning Department may address the further elaborate recommendations. The two topics, storage use in the business park, which was relating to an initiative of the last council. And this council has addressed cannabis production, specifically in the ECR yard. So I just wondered whether the storage and cannabis production is meant to be smoked each rep as usual?
I didn't get the question. No, I wasn't, I, oh.
I think the, I think the question.
Further elaborate your recommendations for the night. I haven't gotten it from you, Chair.
So, sorry, Counselor Anderson, you want to turn off your video? It sounded like you were asking though if cannabis and storage, further restrictions or regulations about that would be addressed? Moving forward.
Yeah, so there were proposals to change the storage regulations. And with that, the cannabis, the element that was considered, was something that was received through the engagement process. There was, yeah, I did have it in the presentation, but just to reiterate, in, when the cannabis regulations were drafted, there was concern that there might be a real surge of cannabis production and that we might have industrial spaces overwhelmed and displacement of other businesses. And so there is a limit on the proximity that cannabis operations to have other cannabis operations, other cannabis production facilities in the, in that zoning. That it does not seem to have, we aren't overwhelmed with applications for cannabis production. It seems like there are probably, you know, some cautious approaches by landowners. And, you know, perhaps the industry is not as large or going as quickly as I assumed. But one of the things we had, after, is that for the smaller cannabis producers, there is often significant challenges in establishing their facilities. And so the idea of being able to have several smaller cannabis production facilities sharing in one space may be beneficial and allow those to be more viable operations or to have some productivity scale. And so the proposal in this update is that we remove that restriction on having cannabis production facilities having to be proper from each other so that there is the opportunity for some of these businesses to do some, get some productivity scale or get it.
Thank you. And Counselor Anderson, are you prepared to move receipt?
Oh, move receipt. I have some technical difficulties here in this freezing weather here now. So I'll move the resolution.
Okay.
Maybe you should get someone else.
Okay, yeah, so Counselor Race looks like he's moving, Counselor Stone, second. Any discussion?
We never did.
Good, we're loose. Yeah, Eric, do you want to turn off your camera? And then, and so any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none? Hearing none. Allohs in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So now we are taking a break. Which one do you think is the motion?
Maybe we can do the motion to close first.
Okay, can I have a motion to close? Counselor Herford first, Counselor Stone or second? Any, allos in favor? Anyone opposed? No, it's the opposition, motion carries, and we are closed.